Let's start with a roll call if we could start with Ross and go around to identify herself.
Good evening, Ross Holden, the school board attorney.
Good afternoon, good evening. Dr. Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall District.
Kaye Dacuff, Jack Jones, District.
Jono Alcaro, At Large.
Judy Lee Rivanna, District.
Katrina Carlson, Ryo District.
Graham Page, Samuel Mila, District.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Sophia Mersingha, Student Representative.
Christine Thompson, Interim Clerk to the Board. Great. Next up will be the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise. Next, we'll observe a moment of silence. Next up, Dr. Haas, who is not in the audience, will present the proposed 2023-2024 funding request for Alamo County Public Schools.
Thank you very much. So I'll just jump right in. Good evening, Chair Carlson, Vice Chair Lee, and members of the school board, and good evening to my colleagues and members of our school community. I'm here tonight to present our draft funding request for the 23-24 school year. But before I get started, I want to share my deepest and ongoing appreciation for our wonderful students, talented and dedicated employees, involved families, and contributing community partners for all that you have done and continue to do in support of our school system. While there is an extensive list of acknowledgements in Section A of our budget book, I want to take a moment to especially thank our fiscal services staff for their commitment to supporting our budget goals and producing a balanced and needs-based draft budget. Members of the fiscal services team include Maya Kumisawa, Christopher Harper, Jackson Zimmerman, Dan Chipman, Rita Dean, Stephanie Grady, Amy Hottinger, Anita Moore, Avis Morse, and Michelle Shiflett. Our Fiscal Year 24 Draft Funding Request represents our collective efforts to support the goals of our strategic plan, "Learning for All," through fiscally responsible budgeting. In alignment with our mission to ensure that every student succeeds, our theme this year is "We Will Know Every Student." It reflects our commitment to provide customized services to our students that recognize and celebrate their differences. In other words, student-centered learning. Every year, our months-long budget development process begins with engaging members of our community, from students and staff to families and community members. We incorporate the ideas we hear from our stakeholders into our planning, and that feedback becomes the foundation on which we develop strategies and proposals and build on our annual budget. As you know, one of the goals of our strategic plan centers around affirming and empowering communities, and that really is the crux of our budget development process as we move toward adoption each spring. A few years ago now, the school board created and approved five primary goals to guide the board's budget development process. One, develop a budget that advances the school division's mission. Two, provide a plan that supports competitive benefits and salaries and reflects market adjustments. Three, develop a responsive and systematic approach to operations that reflects best practices and ensures long-term financial stability. Four, present budget proposals that align with the school division's strategic plan and the school board's priorities. And five, incorporate metrics such as logic models and performance measures as a management and decision-making tool. I've already mentioned our strategic plan several times now, and we're only on Slide 4. I hope that really does drive home the point that our strategic plan, including our vision, mission, values, and goals, is the center of our budget development decisions. The students are at the heart of our budget. The strategic plan is at the center. Tonight, as we talk through the changes in expenditures we're proposing for next school year, we've organized the presentation according to the strategic goal each investment primarily supports. So let's start with Goal 1, Thriving Students. This goal seeks to ensure both academic and social-emotional growth of all students by supporting them to achieve their full potential, by implementing structures that support their mental health and encourage them to pursue their personal interests, and by developing learning experiences that inspire engagement. This school year, we are serving nearly 14,000 diverse learners in preschool through 12th grade, 40% of whom are students of color. More than 1,700 of our students, or 12.4%, are eligible for special education services. More than 4,300 of our students, or 31%, are economically disadvantaged, meaning that their households meet the income eligibility criteria for free or reduced-priced school meals. And greater than 1,500 of our students, or 11%, are English learners, meaning that their first language is other than English, and they are participating in a special program for learning English. Our students are also internationally diverse, representing nearly 100 countries of origin and more than 70 home languages. Every day, our students are hard at work in our schools, and we're going to focus on students as we seek to know everyone, and they're there engaged in learning. We want to take this opportunity to show a compilation of just some of the activities in which our students are involved in alliance with their teachers. These learning experiences encourage student collaboration, fun, and challenging competition and performance, connectivity with nature, and even their global impact, giving back to the community in various ways, creative expression and discovery, social-emotional learning, and more.
Model Congress is a culmination of about a month and a half of true student collaboration.
You can sit in the classroom and learn this in a textbook, but really being a part of this process, and you know, I'm not going to forget it. I'm learning intuitively how all this works, so I think it's really going to help me.
If they would say aye.
Aye!
Okay, that's for your turn.
So I think I will really be able to take kind of the leadership role that I learned from this in order to like use like this knowledge and like kind of having a lot of responsibility and use that in my future years at college.
24 is a card game that was developed in 1988, and it was developed as a computational fluency game.
It challenges you, and it teaches you to push through. Even if you feel like you don't have the answer, you should always try.
They make it a competitive game, and everybody likes the competition, so I guess that makes it fun.
I competed in the competition at this school, but even after that, I want to keep doing 24 for fun because it's just so much fun to practice and learn with.
The Pollinator Habitat Club was formed two years ago with just a couple students and a couple teachers kind of interested in planting a garden.
This garden is supposed to bring more pollinators like butterflies and bees to our gardens because it used to be a lot more barren, but we're trying to make it a lot more nice now.
It's a learning atmosphere, definitely, and friendly. It's just nice to get outside, do some like physical labor, and get a good result that you know other people can see and other people will be able to appreciate.
We are having a food drive for the Blue Ridge Food Bank.
In a way, we're all like helping the community prosper.
We're doing this food drive because we're helping people in need. And yeah, just helping them out because it's holiday time, and we just want to give them some happy holidays.
We are putting these in the hands of 800 4th graders, and in 4th grade, students learn about their role in the solar system, eventually what their impact is here on Earth.
If it wasn't for science, we wouldn't have a lot of resources we have now.
Well, I really like hands-on things and like building, and it looks like you can do that in the kids.
Our group at Monticello High School, the National Art Honor Society, sort of came together to figure out, you know, our action plan, what we're going to do to help the community. So someone suggested a mural, and furthering that, another person suggested us doing something at Mountain View. We figured that it'd be good to extend art to, I guess, kids and to sort of show them the importance of it and to help them understand sharing and diversity along with it.
We are very excited to open our brand-new garden.
I think it's important to plant so you can use vegetables and fruits and stuff to make food.
We get to get some food and some vegetables, and we get to eat them.
It's really exciting because our old one was a little bit too big, and sometimes animals came in and they munched on the garden plants.
The plays are great. They're just naturally great, and part of it is that they write the plays. And so rather than just taking somebody else's thoughts, they're putting their own thoughts on paper.
At first, I never really thought I was a good actor, but Ms. Michael, she like brought it out of me. I feel like in a way, it's always been something I feel like every kid kind of dabbles in like, oh, that would be so cool to be on that show or be in that musical or that play.
I learn tactically, and maybe that came from my art, but it definitely, my brain is wired to, I have to do the thing to learn it, and that's where art kind of comes in. And I love any project where I can make something or create something for it, or even if it's just like tests and I have to make flashcards, and I make them all fun because that's just how my brain is wired. And art can also be something where you can find out how you learn best. So I think it's very important.
Charlesville Cardinals coming here to do a demonstration to our students. This is the first time it's been here at Walton. This is an opportunity for kids to get in touch with their social-emotional learning, also get an opportunity to see their peers, to go with inclusion, CRT, just trying to be inclusive, and like I said, try to develop the whole student, the whole child.
I've never heard of them before, and I was just like, I was wondering like what it was, and then once like I like got told about it, like I was just like, that sounds pretty cool, like they're professionals.
I got to play in a wheelchair and see what it's like and experience it. I feel like a wheelchair might be harder, and it's kind of different because setting picks is like playing in a wheelchair, like you have to like use the chair and like not your body.
Yeah, I thought it was a pretty cool opportunity to show how different everything was and how everybody can do anything if they put their mind to it.
We are doing a benefit concert at the Jefferson Theater for The Haven. It's going to be our jazz ensemble along with some of the area's top jazz musicians from Charlottesville and Richmond.
It theoretically is an annual thing, but with COVID, we haven't done it in the past two years. But it started in 2018, and it's a really great opportunity for us as a band to get this exposure, to play for the community in like a public setting. So it's just really fun for us, and we get the opportunity to play with guest artists.
I tell you, we have the most amazing students, and it really is an honor and a humbling privilege to have the opportunity to serve them.
Model Congress.
Now, how does our Fiscal Year 24 Funding Request support our goal of thriving students? Just if I can get my mouse to cooperate here. I should quickly mention that you're going to see a slide like this for each of our three strategic goals. I'm planning to address each expenditure increase only briefly, but please know that you'll hear more about these topics in our upcoming budget work sessions, and detailed explanations are included in the budget book. With that said, $1.2 million of our increase in expenditures is allocated to regular growth. Based on our staffing standards, this supports adding 14.4 FTEs in response to changes in projected enrollment and demographics. Another $1.1 million will allow our Office of Special Education to respond to an increase in the level of intensive support services currently required by our students with disabilities. Just under 3/4 of the million dollars is proposed to support the addition of eight FTEs used to address current and projected enrollment growth in our English learner population. This aligns with Virginia Department of Education's recommendations to provide increased support at the secondary level for newcomers as well as long-term English learners. Also in support of thriving students, our request proposes just over half a million dollars to expand our safety initiatives by adding security assistance in our secondary schools. Another $126,000 supports assigning a school resource officer, which is a sworn law enforcement officer, to our Northern feeder patterned schools. And finally, we've included $116,000 to support operationalizing our mental health services as we begin to shift funding for our Coordinator of Mental Health from one-time funding to recurring funding. I'll note that we will continue to fund our 24 social-emotional learning coaches in the FY24 budget with one-time monies. We'll move to incorporate permanent funding for those positions in FY25. These investments bring our total expenditure increase in support of thriving students to just under $3.9 million. I mentioned a number of demographic shifts, so I thought it would be enlightening to compare our student enrollment today to our enrollment numbers from a decade ago. Compared to fall membership enrollment 10 years ago in 2012-13, our total pre-K through 12 enrollment has grown by 707 students from 13,263 to 13,970. That's a 6.9% increase in overall enrollment. Over the same period, our enrollment of students with disabilities has increased by 396 students from 1,340 to 1,736, a 37% increase, and 12.4% of our current student population. Our economically disadvantaged student enrollment has grown by 765 students. That exceeds the growth in our total number of students and represents a 23.8% increase from 3,568 students 10 years ago to 4,333 in the current school year, 31% of our current student population. To put that in context, our number of economically disadvantaged students is larger than the total enrollment of Charlottesville City Schools, the next largest school district in our immediate area. Most notably, we've gained 490 English learners compared 10 years ago, a 45.3% increase. Where we were serving 1,048 English learners 10 years ago, we are now serving a population of 1,538 English learners, and that's 11% of our current student population. So before we move on to Goal 2, I wanted to mention our Instructional Practices Audit. This is a next step in supporting our goal of thriving students. A problem that our division faces is that we have not raised achievement levels for our students of color despite implementation of a variety of evidence-based and state-mandated programs and structures aimed to support improved outcomes for all students and yield robust formative data. Strategies like professional learning communities, culturally responsive teaching, responsive classroom, high school redesign, phonics-based reading instruction, and math investigations, just to name a few. The extent to which these programs are implemented with fidelity and are impactful remains unclear, and so we have initiated an Instructional Practices Audit to obtain consultative services to help us better understand the following. One, our failure to end the predictive value of race in reading and math achievement, particularly in K-5 reading and math, as well as high school Algebra I. Two, the root cause of our achievement gap between students of color and their peers and other demographic groups in K-5 reading and math and high school Algebra I. And three, best practices researched and specific action steps for improvement that we can take as soon as possible. Funding needs that may result from the audit will be considered using one-time budgets. What we know is that students learn best when they have choices and a stake in their education and future, when they can apply what they learn and get feedback from experts in their field, when they feel they are making a contribution to their family and community, and when they are challenged and coached by a high-quality teacher in the state-of-the-art facilities. With this philosophy as a foundation, we're preparing to launch our Career Learning Communities next school year for students in grades 10 through 12. As an initiative that represents a real investment in the division's goal of thriving students, our Career Learning Communities will function as small cohorts through which students will explore career opportunities based on their interests. From health sciences to hospitality and agriculture to information technology, there is a career learning community for every student. We currently, as of now, have 94 students signed up to participate in these programs next year. And we're really excited to be partnering with several community organizations to help facilitate high-quality experiences for our students. Among the community partners currently onboard are PVCC, the UVA Equity Center, UVA Health, St. Terre Martha Jefferson Hospital, the Charlottesville Alamo Convention and Visitors Bureau, Blue Ridge Builders, and the Charlottesville Business Innovation Council, to name a few. Moving on, the second goal in our strategic plan supports affirming and empowering communities. This goal includes fostering culturally responsive environments that respect and champion the life experiences of our stakeholders, supporting both their physical and mental health, and actively empowering our students, their families, and our employees to engage in our school community. I mentioned earlier that affirming and empowering communities is at the center of our budget development process, but our work to engage our community extends far beyond budget planning and decision-making. Every school year, we connect with our stakeholders and strive to build and strengthen those relationships through a variety of engagement efforts, including community forums, culturally responsive teaching, which emphasizes building positive learning partnerships with students, families, and communities, our many advisory groups, including our newly operational Employee Voice and Action Committee, stay interviews conducted by our Human Resources Department, superintendent listening tour stops, multiple surveys, school board meetings and public hearings, information sessions, and multiple other community events and even many, many more school-based events, such as our annual orientation for military families, technology support nights for multilingual families, and our Equity and Opportunities Fair, which is open to the full community and happens to be coming up this Saturday, February 18th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Burley Middle School, just right around the corner. I did put a flyer at each of your seats. One thing I'm really excited about is that, for one thing, this is now going to be during the school year rather than after school is over, so I think we'll have a bigger turnout. The other part is that this is a collaborative effort between our Community Engagement Office and our HR Department, so it's the Equity Fair, but it's also a job fair. So we've put the word out to the community. This is a great opportunity for students that are studying at local colleges to come visit, to see if they may want to join us, learn about our values, learn about the programs we have, and hopefully leave excited about applying for a job to work in our school system. So I hope to see all the board members there, at least for part of the day, just to be there and check out what's happening. And I'll mention specifically, specific to culturally responsive teaching, that 368 of our educators and staff have earned either certification or a micro-credential in culturally responsive teaching since 2015-16, and we've seen growth in participation each year. Dr. Kaiser informed me recently that we have our highest number yet, 181 staff members working toward credentials this year. So how's this funding request support our goal of affirming and empowering communities? $276,000 of our increase is intended to expand access for pre-K students to EDEP childcare services, to reduce EDEP waitlists, and to mitigate hiring challenges. Nearly $170,000 will be to fund an executive director to assist in the planning, direction, development, administration, supervision, and implementation of the Alamo Foundation for Education, which seeks to expand partnerships that will lead to sustainable, diversified funding streams and significant philanthropic investments to empower our strategic plan. $115,000 is allocated to hiring a dedicated Title IX coordinator, who is responsible for the administration, supervision, and monitoring of the school division's compliance with federal Title IX requirements, as well as state and school division policies and regulations. And the last item is a proposal I'm quite excited about. Our request includes $10,000 to pilot a Student Voice Fund. This is an initiative that will encourage students to apply for funds to address a problem currently facing our school division, including a mentored learning experience grounded in our Portrait of a Learner. And that brings us to a total increase of about $570,000 in support of affirming and empowering communities. Through my nearly 33 years of working in public schools, I have noticed students stepping up in areas of passion to help their peers and the community as a whole through creative approaches. The Student Voice Fund provides an opportunity for us to be allies to our students by providing resources that enable them to go beyond identifying problems to creating and implementing solutions. A recent example of this kind of work in action is the Empower Her Project created by Alamo High School senior Wei Ning Ding and sophomore Avery Bruin. Recognizing the inequitable impact on student well-being and academic success created by poor access to menstrual products, Wei Ning and Avery sought to help by creating an organization dedicated to menstrual equality. Their efforts have resulted in the collection of over 20,000 menstrual products for Alamo County and Charlottesville City Public Schools. Students, you can learn more about their work on their website, empowerhercvilleweebly.com, and I also encourage you to click on the podcast link. A few weeks ago, I recorded about a 15-minute podcast with Wei Ning and Avery to learn about their project, how they got inspired, how they did it, but I think equally important, how they have become the leaders that they are in so many ways. In addition to serving our division's strategic goal of thriving students, the Empower Her Project supports equity, one of our four core values, as well as social justice and inclusion, one of the eight competencies of our Portrait of a Learner. This is the vision we have for our Student Voice Fund, which we plan to launch with a pilot amount of $10,000. The fund will offer grants to finance up to eight projects based on student proposals to address problems currently facing the school division. Approval will lead to a mentored learning experience rooted in one or more competencies of our Portrait of a Learner, including adaptability, anti-racism, communication, creativity, critical thinking, empathy, learner's mindset, and social justice and inclusion. I realize that our Student Voice Fund is only a $10,000 budget proposal, and I've given it two slides now, but what amounts to much less than 1/10th of 1% of our total increase in expenditures, but I see this as a much more valuable initiative than the dollars we've attached to it for the pilot. I do plan to propose additional funding in future years as we get better at this work with our students. Most of you have heard me say, probably many times more than you want to hear me say, that in addition to the almost 2,700 employees we have on payroll, we have nearly 14,000 students who are unemployed employees, and let's employ them in making our schools, community, and our world a better place. We should let them lead and let us be in alliance with them. As a next step in our efforts toward affirming and empowering communities, I'm very interested in building momentum around the concept of community schools. The idea behind community schools is that the school becomes a hub of the community and empowers students, staff, and families in leadership while providing services that the local community wants and needs through partnerships. Examples might include health services, nutrition programs, counseling, extended hours of operation, perhaps spreading the 180-day school calendar across a full calendar year, and family and adult education programs. Our intention is to start small this school year with a leadership panel tasked with informing the needs and determining how best to structure the hub to meet those needs. The third and final goal of our strategic plan supports equitable transformative resources. This goal is all about attracting, developing, and retaining high-quality staff, developing sustainable and modern facilities, infrastructure, and equipment, and equitably distributing resources to transform learning experiences and opportunities. We say it every year because it is true and worth repeating, our employees are our greatest and most valuable resource. In fact, I'll repeat it again. Our employees are our greatest and most valuable resource. We all agree on that. ACPS currently employs 2,648 staff members, half of whom serve the division in a teaching capacity, including classroom teachers, speech pathologists, school counselors, and instructional coaches, and librarians. About 43% of our employees hold non-teacher and non-administrative positions, such as teaching assistants, bus drivers, custodians. such as teaching assistants, bus drivers, custodians, maintenance and food service staff, office associates, human resources staff, and other support staff. The remaining 7% are administrators, including principals, assistant principals, and central office and other leadership personnel. You'll notice that our retention rate for teachers as of this fall is 82.9%. The most recent data published by the Virginia Department of Education indicates a statewide retention rate of 80.5%, nearly two and a half percentage points below ours. Our teacher vacancy rate is nearly half the state average, 2% this fall, compared to the statewide average of 3.86%. There are multiple school divisions in Virginia that struggle with vacancy rates ranging as high as 10% to 20%. And that makes me particularly grateful, first, for our incredible teachers, all of our employees who stay with us. You cannot have that kind of success with retaining without people that are truly dedicated and passionate about the work they're doing, and hopefully understanding the tremendous impact they have, positive impact they have on our community, just really one child at a time, but impacting the whole community. But I'm also grateful for our school board's support for competitive compensation, which bolsters our recruitment, hiring, and retention efforts, and for our educators who remain committed to Almawal County Public Schools. And I would just like to say in the same way that it is an honor and a humbling privilege to serve our nearly 14,000 students. I feel equally grateful to work every day to support such passionate, competent, and dedicated colleagues as we have. The biggest chunk of our expenditure increase is invested in supporting equitable transformative resources, starting with nearly $9.5 million to fund a 5% salary increase for all employees and adjustments to our step scale for teachers. Additionally, our request includes $1.4 million to support continued improvements to our substitute program. Improvements to date include the hiring of school-based substitutes as regular employees, a pay increase for daily substitute teachers, and the hiring of a substitute coordinator. This proposal supports a second phase of improvements, including an increase in operational funding and the addition of 10 school-based substitutes to serve schools with an average substitute fill rate below 40%. $1.2 million of our request supports a restructure of differentiated staffing. Traditionally, schools have used differentiated staffing allocations to reduce class size and provide intervention services. Our proposed restructure adds staffing to ensure consistent and transparent allocations to schools to support lower class sizes in our most at-risk schools. A full-time reading specialist for each school, which exceeds the requirements of the new Virginia Literacy Act, and extra staffing to support tiered services. Nearly 250,000 of our requests supports additional building services staff to maintain continued use of HEPA air purifiers in our classrooms, clinics, and school buses. Our request also proposes $61,000 to hire a records analyst responsible for establishing and maintaining a digitally secure student record storage system, and $43,000 to permanently fund half an FTE management analyst in our Fiscal Services Department that was initially added using one-time federal pandemic relief funding. In total, our expenditure increase in support of equitable transformative resources is $12.4 million. In the current school year, we've worked to improve the salaries of our employees through multiple efforts, starting with a 6% compensation increase for all employees last July. Then in December, our school board approved a one-time $1,000 bonus for all regular employees, .7 FTE or more, and $750 for regular employees who were less than that. Also, in December, we implemented the first phase of recommendations that came out of our Spring 2022 Compensation Study. We increased starting pay for bus drivers to $21.50 per hour and implemented a step scale that provides annual compensation increases based upon years of experience, as it is for teachers. We also improved pay for school nurses who hold an RN license, and increased compensation for positions identified as hard to fill, that is, positions that attract small candidate pools, remain unfilled for an extended period of time, or have a higher-than-average turnover rate. This spring, we will move forward with the second phase of recommendations from our compensation study, including increased pay for all positions identified as 4% to 10% below market midpoint. We're also planning to make adjustments to positions that warrant reclassification based on ongoing review. Looking forward, our fiscal year '24 draft funding request supports a 5% salary increase for all employees, plus adjustments to the teacher step scale. And recognizing the value of our health benefits as part of a competitive employee compensation package, our request also incorporates employer rate increases of 7% for health insurance premiums in the 2024 plan year. While I do not have the numbers at this time, we are in the process of analyzing the healthcare fund to determine if an increase for employees will be warranted in the new plan year. I'd be remiss in presenting a needs-based budget that supports equitable transformative resources if I didn't address our capital needs. This five-year summary is not new to our board members, but I will bring your attention to the color coding. Wherein projects shown in green are fully funded, projects shown in yellow are partially funded, and projects shown in red remain unfunded. This is an opportune time to thank our Almawal County partners, and I did notice Supervisor Dianna McKeel is here tonight, so thank you, Ms. McKeel. As the current capital improvement program includes an expansion and improvements at Mountain View Elementary, the construction of a second high school center, and two elementary schools. So thank you, Almawal County. However, we consider all of these projects to be critical needs over the next five years. While the operating budget we are proposing moves us forward in many ways, our work will be severely hindered in the absence of an infrastructure that provides adequate capacity and optimal learning environments. Funding the renovations we've requested through a phased, multi-year approach would elevate the school division's aging schools to modern standards, including electrical updates to accommodate technology, improved access to natural light in classrooms, adherence to the American Disabilities Act, updates to outdoor learning spaces, and reconfiguration of spaces to improve function, efficiency, and safety. Speaking of aging buildings, half of our schools are more than 50 years old now, including two that are more than 80 years old. The other half range from 20 to 49 years in age. On top of the renovation needs that are a normal consequence of aging buildings, our current capacity needs require the use of nearly 80 mobile classrooms across the division for classroom instruction, auxiliary services, flex spaces, and storage. Nearly 50% of our students, that's about 7,000 students, attend schools that fail to meet their current capacity needs, and that percentage is projected to increase as regional planners advise us that Almawal County's population will expand by 30% over the next 30 years. The combined strategy of continually expanding facilities built in the early years of the 20th century and adding more mobile classrooms to meet capacity needs is not sustainable. It is neither in the best interest of our educational program or of our students, nor does it represent a thriving, prosperous community, which we are. So we've now reviewed our proposed increases according to the strategic goal they primarily support. Here's a look at our total increase in expenditures organized by expense types, including a baseline adjustment that reduces our increase by more than $10 million, most of which is the result of eliminating one-time costs that are currently included in our adopted budget; $4 million for technical and nondiscretionary expenses, including an employer rate increase for healthcare premiums; a $500,000 transfer to the Children's Services Act; an increase in our transfer to K-Tech; a payment to Almawal County for shared licensing services that includes our employee time and attendance system; and an overall increase in the cost of goods and services due to inflation. We've talked about the proposed $9.5 million investment in employee compensation, as well as the $4.3 million increase due to enrollment growth and demographic shifts. The $680,000 allocated to transitioning from one-time funding also includes items we've discussed: full-time teaching and EDEP assistance, filter replacement, mental health services, and half an FTE for fiscal services. New proposals totaling nearly $2.5 million, which is less than 1% of our total funding request, include the second phase of our substitute program improvements, security assistance, an executive director for AFE, a school resource officer, a Title IX coordinator, a records analyst, and last but not least, $10,000 to pilot a Student Voice Fund. With the baseline adjustment, our proposed increase in expenditures totals just over $10.9 million. The increase of nearly $10.9 million brings our total funding request for the 2023-24 school year to $257.3 million. We are currently balanced based on anticipated revenues that include an 8.8% increase in local funding and a 6.9% increase in state funding. However, our balanced scenario faces some uncertainties and potential challenges that we should all be aware. The timeline for the state budget approval is an unknown. Last year, the Virginia General Assembly did not pass a budget until June 1st, and the governor didn't sign it until June 21st, a mere 10 days before the start of the new fiscal year, before the governor signed that budget. Keeping in mind that we are scheduled to adopt our FY '24 budget at the end of April, the point is, we can't rely too heavily on the funding numbers we're getting from the state right now. Another area of uncertainty and possible significant challenge concerns the state's contemplation of a 7% salary increase, a decision that would have a large impact on our budget. Another challenge worth mentioning is the standards of quality for SOQ funding. Roughly half of our positions in the school operating budget are SOQ positions. That doesn't mean, though, that those positions are fully funded. For example, more than 200 of our teaching positions have $0 of state funding attached to the positions. On top of that, the teacher positions that are supported by the SOQ funding are underfunded by about $7,000 each because the state uses lower salary assumptions than we do. I will point out that the state is currently deliberating potential changes in the SOQ formula and funding that may benefit us later in the budget process. Another unknown is what actions the Virginia General Assembly might take to address the formula mistake that the video we originally made for basic aid and sales tax funding. There is some movement to make up for this mistake through other funding streams. Finally, as we move forward with our financial planning, it is fiscally responsible to consider that we may face a recession in the next few years. We need to ensure that our decisions are financially sustainable through a potential downturn in the economy. While we're fairly confident that fiscal year '24 will be a good year, we're not as sure about the years to come. In closing, I would like to thank you, members of the board, for the opportunity this evening to present our draft funding request for the next school year. More importantly, I want to recognize your ongoing efforts to champion the interests of each of our students, getting to know each student, and supporting our work to getting to know each student so we can support them and challenge them and enrich their lives, their families, our employees, and our community, and your continued partnership with the local government and the Almawal County Board of Supervisors to advocate for the needs of our school division. I want to acknowledge the superintendent's cabinet and the executive leadership team for their strategic support throughout the budget development process, and the communications team for their contributions to both the budget book and tonight's presentation. Thank you, Jennifer Butler. Jennifer couldn't be here tonight. Her son is ill tonight, so she's with him. Hopefully, she's listening on the stream. Thank you for working on your 16th funding request presentation. And while I listed her name earlier, I want to include a special thank you to Maya Kumizawa, our Director of Budget and Planning for first-class leadership of our budget development process. Now, according to our schedule, I believe there is a break, and I believe next up tonight is the first budget work session. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you for that presentation, Dr. Haas. That is correct. We do have a break. I say we keep it to 10 minutes, which then leaves us 40 minutes for the work session when we return. when we return.
What time did you say? 9:30?
Hello, everyone.
Nine to three.
We're going to be resuming our meeting here with budget work session number one. Ms. Kumazawa will be leading this. Are you ready?
Good evening. I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning, and I will be facilitating your first budget work session to follow up on the superintendent's presentation. Just so that you're aware, here's a summary of the topics that we plan on covering this evening and the topics that we plan on covering over the next few weeks. Tonight, I'll walk you through the budget book, so I hope you all have your copies sitting in front of you, and provide you some more information about the anticipated expenditure changes for next year. Next week, we'll dig into some of the proposals that are related to enrollment and demographics and organizational development. And at work session number three, we'll cover some of the other proposals, in particular those related to health and safety. And at that work session, we can also present any additional requests for information that you have. These are working sessions designed for you so that you can understand what's in the funding request and so that you're prepared to approve a request in March. If you have any questions during the presentations, I'll pause between sections. If you have questions later, after tonight, at any point over the next few weeks, please email them to budget@k12albemarle.org, and staff will provide consolidated responses either in writing or address them at future work sessions. Are there any questions about this? As you've heard many times this evening, our work is guided by our Learning for All Strategic Plan. As we focus on budget development, I'm reminding you that the purpose of the work is to distribute all resources in an equitable manner to transform learning experiences and opportunities, as stated in Goal Three. Dr. Haas left you with a slide of a balanced funding request of $257 million. While there are a lot of numbers on the slide, the plan for this evening is to ensure that you walk away knowing what these numbers mean and how to find them in your budget books. I'll first begin with an overview of what you can find where. So please use your books to take notes, flag items, and flip through along with me. The budget book is available to the public on the FY24 budget development website at So this is a list of the major items that you can find in the book. I'll first draw your attention to Section A. This contains the message from the superintendent, general school division information, an introduction, an overview on the process, and school fund summaries. As we presented earlier this evening, one of our budget goals is to incorporate metrics such as logic models and performance measures as a management and decision-making tool. So these metrics are located in the back half of Section A to accompany each of the new budget proposals. So if you're waiting through Section A, don't stop. The really good meaty stuff is towards the end, so keep going. Another section I'll draw your attention to is Section G, supplemental materials. This is where you'll find data like enrollment projections, staffing standards and allocations of those standards, and school-based budget allocations. And we will spend more time in that section later to dig into some of those. Are there any questions about these overall areas? So the way the agenda is structured this evening is by the way our funds and our budget book is structured. So at the top is our total school budget. That's made up of our school fund and our special revenue funds. These are two distinctly separate accounting funds, and your final adopted budget appropriation will reflect these two separate funds. Our budget development largely focuses on the school fund, as this fund represents the day-to-day operating funds of our division. And as you know, the draft funding request is balanced, meaning that school fund revenues equals school fund expenditures. School fund expenditures can be broken down even further by school-based expenses and department-based expenses. So if you follow along the orange numbers, this is the order in which we'll review the budget, which is the order that the sections are in your book. We'll first start with school fund revenues, Section B, then discuss school fund expenditures, Section C, D, and E. And then finally, we'll review the special revenue funds in Section F before ending with expenditure changes, coming back to Section A. So everyone should flip over now to Section B, school fund revenues. If you look at Pages B2 and B3, you'll find summary-level information about the revenues, including five-year data. About 72% of budgeted revenues come from local revenue sources. This primarily comprises the local government transfer, but we do have other local school revenues that are detailed further in this section. About 28% of FY24 revenues are projected to come from the state, and just $618,000 is budgeted from the federal government as part of the school fund. When compared to the current year's adopted budget, you can see there is an 8.8% change in local revenues and a 6.9% change in state revenues. Combined, we're looking at an 8.2% increase in recurring revenue as part of this draft funding request. If you go further down the table, you can see in FY23, we budgeted about $8.7 million in one-time use of fund balance. You can see in this draft budget for FY24, we're not currently budgeting any use of fund balance as a one-time use. When taking this into consideration, the overall budget-to-budget increase stands at an increase of 4.4%, and the revenue dollar change is the $10.9 million. So you're probably asking right now, why the big swing in the one-time revenues? Here's a quick recap of what's been happening since the pandemic, landing us to where we are today. In FY20, when the pandemic impacts began in March, county government staff advised it was possible there could be a revenue shortfall and the transfer may not be able to be made in full. As it turned out, the total FY20 general fund revenues exceeded the budget by 0.1%, so the transfer was made in full that year. At that point, though, we paused spending where we could in March, and we saw savings throughout that year. In FY21, we continued to see savings as a result of significant operational changes during the pandemic. Also, revenues in FY21 and '22 were stronger than anticipated, and during FY22, we received a $10 million mid-year transfer adjustment. All of these factors played into the buildup of our fund balance, and in the FY22 and '23 adopted budgets, we include one-time uses of that balance. Currently, we don't have this budgeted for use in FY24, but this may change as we continue to evaluate and manage our financial position in the current year. We'll first discuss the local transfer. The local transfer from the general fund for ACPS is $182 million in FY24, an increase of $14.6 million, or 8.7%. This transfer amount is set by Albemarle County. After adjustments are made from projected local shared revenues, the remainder of the increase is split, 60% for ACPS and 40% for Albemarle County. The initial adjustments that are made off the top include transfers to the capital improvement program and for debt service, which include many of our school capital projects. This year, in addition to operating budget considerations, ACPS and county staff have been collaborating on strategies for the FY24 to '28 CIP as a follow-up to the joint board meeting that we had on December 7th. The results of those updates will be shared next week, February 22nd, as part of the county executives' recommended budget. Historically, here's a look at the local government transfer. Year-to-year growth has been strong each year, a testament to our strong local economy and the financial team at the county. Typically, budgeted transfer amounts are not adjusted mid-year, so the dip you see in FY21 was a lower budgeted amount that was planned at the beginning of the pandemic in the spring of 2020. That year actually turned out to have strong local revenues. What you don't see in this chart, though, as Dr. Haas mentioned, are projections after FY24. The county is expecting a recessionary period in FY25 and '26, as presented in the five-year forecast presentation this past fall. So we do still anticipate seeing growth during that time, just not at the levels we've experienced in these recent years. Next, we'll turn to state revenues. You can find information about state revenues starting on Page B7. There's a lot of detail, several pages included, about state revenues in this section, but this slide just pulls out some of the highlights and the items that are contributing to the projected increase from this year to next. Our enrollment is growing, and that increases our funding levels. And in some areas, per pupil amounts are increasing, so even if enrollment were to stay constant, funding levels per pupil increase. In addition, sales tax has been strong, and we're anticipating an increase in our share of that sales tax. Next, the state is providing a hold harmless amount to offset a decrease in sales tax as a result of policy changes that took effect this January. And finally, they're providing a portion of funding to cover a 5% salary increase on July 1st, 2023. These items are part of the additional $4.6 million that we're anticipating from the state, or an increase of 6.9%. Here's a historical view of state revenue since FY19. The last five years have seen increases per year between 4% and 14%, and for FY24, as I mentioned, we're projecting a 6.9% increase. But again, this figure is still largely subject to change. And as Dr. Haas spoke about in his presentation, there still remain uncertainties and challenges. This slide summarizes some of the key changes that are included in both the House and Senate amendments to the governor's introduced budget. Both of these versions propose an additional 2% salary increase, and if this moves forward, it would impact significantly with our budget. As you know, we would have to bear most of that cost. And while only in the Senate amendments, I have shown the proposed change in the support cap, meaning that this version of the budget supports eliminating the cap on state funding for support staff for $271 million, but that's statewide. And our share of these budgets were just released earlier tonight, so we'll continue providing you with updates. So that's the end of the revenue section in Section B. Do you have any questions?
Refresh my memory about the support cap. What is that exactly?
Many years ago, during a recession, in order to reduce their budgets, the state put a cap on the number of support positions that could be funded, the money that's distributed to divisions. So the proposal in the Senate budget is to remove that cap, which comes at a cost of $271 million. So we'll turn next to our projected expenditures, Section C. So if you turn to the next tab over, Section C, this section is fairly short. It provides summary-level overviews of our expenditures and also assumptions used. So historical compensation assumptions with regards to salary increases or healthcare rates, you can find those in this section. And as I mentioned in the beginning, we do have expenditures in the school fund separated by school-based budgets. So here you can see about 73% are school-based and 27% are department-based. As a reminder, school-based expenditures are those expenses that you can track to a specific school building. So this would include principals, nurses, teachers, custodians. And department-based budgets are expenses that serve our schools, but you can't link it to a specific school building. And examples of this are central office, which is pretty straightforward, but more significantly, positions like bus drivers and maintenance workers. Those positions serve the division as a whole, and they're not assigned to specific locations. And then separately, on the right, we have a budget. And then separately, on the right, we have a budget for special revenue funds. But this next section will largely focus on just the school fund. So this is a summary overview of expense types, including both our school and department-based budgets. Salary, benefits, and other wages make up 85% of the budgets, and the remaining 15% is split between operating and transfer expenses. And so when we talk about being a people business, it's because 85% of our entire budget is going towards paying people. I often get questions about our school fund transfers. So here's a detailed breakdown of transfers, both this year and next. The largest transfer is a transfer to our technology replacement fund, which is one of our special revenue funds. This is the fund for computer replacement program for our students and staff. And other transfers that are coming out of the school fund include transfers to Bright Stars, learning resources, special education IDEA, and vehicle replacement. And overall, in FY24, our total projected transfer amount is $8.6 million. Right, the next section, keep flipping one tab over. This one then comes one level down to school-based expenditures. So those expenses that you can link to our school buildings. So on this slide, you can see all of the schools that we budget for. They include our elementary, middle, and high schools, as well as our centers and multi-school services. We'll focus tonight's discussion on our comprehensive school, Center One, and community lab school. This pyramid that you see here represents three major categories that we use to build up the budget for these schools. On average, 93% of school budgets are for FTEs, full-time equivalents, or compensation paid to people. 3% are division allocations, and 4% are school operations. So we'll go through each of these parts of the pyramid over the next few slides. First, we'll talk about the 93% of school budgets that go towards supporting a school's FTE count. There are certainly nuances and complexities to how that's calculated. But at the simplest level, it's mostly straightforward. So one input we use are enrollment projections. K-12, as you know, K-12 enrollment projections have been developed for the next school year by school and by grade level. Most of the staffing standards are based on projected enrollment. The purpose of the staffing standards is to foster equity across schools by distributing resources equitably, as we have established in our strategic plan. There are specific page numbers listed on this slide here. So if you kind of flip over to Section G, take a look at these pages for a few minutes. If you'd like, turn to your neighbor and see if you can back into the staffing allocation for regular classroom teachers or base teachers at Agner-Hurt Elementary School. So the purpose of this is to consolidate your knowledge of these contents in Section G. So I'll pause for just a few moments so you can turn to those pages and see if you can take a look at the pages on the slide. You still have your own languages. You have to do the math, Vice Chair.
While looking at what the staffing standard is.
So the pages you should be looking at are G2, G5, and G18.
G5 is for middle school, though, right? No? No, this is in general. No, elementary school. Maya, I get what you're saying conceptually. So what does general education mean? When you also have the counseling, staffing standards, the health staffing standards, that we just don't need to worry about. You're just asking us to do the general.
Oh, yeah, I think you guys are getting way ahead of me. All right, so I think you all basically got it. So on Page G2, you looked at Agner-Hurt's projected enrollment. And then when you look at our staffing standard, we have different ratios for kindergarten through third grade versus fourth through fifth grade. That's why we do projections by grade level. So if you add up the K3 enrollment at Agner-Hurt and the 4-5 enrollment, you get to their total enrollment. But because we're using different ratios for those grades, we have 13.04 FTEs for K3 and 6.34 FTEs for 4-5. And together, that makes up the base classroom teacher allocation to Agner-Hurt to equal 19.39. And the reason why, I realize the table is really tiny font, but on Page G18 and 19, that is a full, comprehensive look at if you're curious as to know what their staffing is. What is a school allocated in terms of base classroom teachers? We'll talk about differentiated staffing at a different work session, but you can see in each of the columns what the staffing is. And I know we've had some questions from the school board about the number of resources dedicated for each of the schools.
I noticed on G18, there's no numbers in the elementary intervention/provention.
Yes, so when we have... Do you want me... Okay. This is the way we allocate funding for teachers. So for example, as part of tiered services or other areas, they can choose to staff for the intervention services. And schools also, we'll talk about a little bit more, in their operating budgets, get funding for intervention services. So we have provided intervention services in different areas of the budget, but there's nothing in that column because it's not a specific allocation.
So whereabouts in budget, which section would I find?
I'll point that out when we get to the operating budgets as well. So are there any questions about how these pages work? I'm sure you can spend more time with it later.
I have not a question, but just thank you for doing that. That's actually been... It was really helpful to actually have to sit and think through how is this done. So that was a good teaching moment for us. Thank you. And other random thing, which probably shouldn't happen, but we always put our schools alphabetically. But honestly, for comparison, I think in some of these charts, it might be helpful to see it by size, because I always find myself comparing when we're looking at numbers, you know, Baker Butler to Mountain View, so I can better understand how our schools stack up. But this is a random little point that I'm always trying to compare by size. So that's all.
So that was sort of that big 93% of the pyramid. We'll go to the top of the pyramid now, which is the school operations. So this is... These are funds provided to schools in terms of monetary amounts, not FTEs. And they're generally budgeted at the discretion of the principal. Each school receives a base budget allocation, that's a flat amount. And then they get a per pupil allocation, that's variable, and that's determined by enrollment and demographics. There are also funds called program allocations that are intended for specific programs, such as Ms. Osborn Intervention. So that's where those funds live for some of the schools. Common expense items here include supplies and materials, intervention wages, contract services, and copiers. But again, they differ across schools. This is where you'll find the most variability.
Does the fact that we pull out that sort of thing, is that any indicator of the priority we put on these things?
I don't think so. We could pull the money out that's dedicated for intervention and say, this is your FTE amount. I guess it's one of those things that...
Yeah, just because we had that long work session and all of that, I think that's why it's on my mind.
Okay. And that can be found on Page G23. You can see the program allocations, and intervention is the largest amount there.
I think also, just, you know, when you look at that list, it's very much one of these things is not like the other.
Yeah. That's something.
Do you want a copier, or do you want an interventionist?
The program allocations aren't discretionary. They have to be spent within those programs. It's sort of that base budget and the per pupil that is more discretionary.
I have a question about G22. What is the per pupil variable number?
That's the per pupil allocation. So if you look at the little boxes at the bottom of the page, we allocate $80 for each elementary school student. So that's the per pupil variable.
So then Albemarle, it's just 140 times however many people are enrolled in that school, gives us that per pupil variable?
Yes.
And then do you add on because of the number economically disadvantaged? Is that what that...
The second box.
Is there a figure anywhere in here that has a per pupil expenditure by school? I remember we talked about that a few years ago.
Yep, we'll have it in the following slide. Right. So the middle green part of the pyramid equals about $5.8 million for the entire division. They represent division allocations. These are funds that are budgeted in the schools, but are more centrally managed. So a great example of this is budgets for substitutes, since this is a change we're implementing for next year. Currently, schools have had to use their operating budgets to pay for substitute wages, which is highly variable and difficult to predict from year to year. So beginning next year, we're shifting that responsibility centrally so that we can fully fund the program and provide relief to schools. And as part of the substitute program improvements proposal, which we'll discuss next week, we're adding about $1 million in new funding to account for higher usage and higher pay rates for our substitutes. And that's where this would live. So coming back to Agner-Hurt, let's come back to Section D. And if you flip to Page D13, you'll see, you'll not necessarily see the pyramid breakdown. That's just how the budget is developed. What you'll see is their budget summarized in two additional ways. So the top of the table breaks down their budgets by expense type, including salary, benefits, and operations. And the bottom table breaks out the same, $5.6 million, by state reporting category. So the pyramid and both tables show an FY24 budget at that school for $5.6 million. So this is a summary of all of our school budgets. The blue columns are the elementary schools. The green columns are the middle schools. And the orange columns are the budgets for our high schools. As you can see, typically, the larger the school, the more FTEs they have, and their budgets are larger, with Albemarle High School budgeted at $22 million next year. So if you take those school-based budgets and divide by the school's projected enrollment, we can compare schools in a different light. Per pupil expenditures generally fall between $10,000 and $15,000 for the schools across the different levels. Note that these per pupil expenditures are different from how divisions or the VDOE reports per pupil expenditures, because these only consider the school-based budgets and not the entire ACPS budget. Are there any questions about Section D?
Is the FTE summary in each school's page, is that new?
No, we've had that in prior years. But again, that kind of more detailed table in Section G, I find more useful. This is more of that summary level. So moving on to Section E, department-based expenditures. Department budgets are less formulaic than our school budgets because each department is unique in the services that they provide. Generally, though, here's how their budgets are developed. Staffing and operational allocations are kept flat from one year to the next. Compensation is updated for turnover and reclassifications. And any other department changes are justified and detailed and summarized in Section A. One of our largest departments is Building Services. You can find their budget on Page B35. The 63 positions in this department make up about 38% of their budget for next year. There are example positions listed on the slide. And although our custodial staff is managed by the Building Services Department, they're not included in this budget because they're in the school-based budget, since custodians are assigned to specific schools. Other expenses for the department are services to the schools, such as utilities, repair and maintenance of school buildings, lighting, furniture, and fixtures. And this pie chart will look different for every department. Here's a list of all of our department budgets, and they're organized by oversight area. Budgets range from $30,000 per year to $16 million per year. And as a group, they make up 27% of our school fund expenditures. And there's a page for each of these budgets in Section E. Are there any questions about department budgets? Right. So keep going to the next tab. If you turn to Section F, that's our special revenue funds. And we'll just spend a couple minutes here. We have three major categories in our special revenue funds. Fee-based services, that include our child nutrition program and extended day enrichment programs, or EDEP. Our grant programs are located here, as well as our capital replacement funds. As I mentioned earlier, the school fund has expenditure transfers to our capital replacement funds to maintain those programs. So they are overlapping. Since the pandemic began, we've included federal pandemic relief funds as part of our special revenue funds. The grants we have remaining are listed here with a rough estimated balance and their planned uses. These generally need to be spent down by September 2024. And then the last one listed here is a local fund that we've built up during the pandemic for our learning recovery efforts. For example, if needed, recommendations resulting from the instructional audit could be budgeted here. Are there any questions about special revenue? Are there any questions about special revenue funds?
I have one. I saw that in Dr. Ha's budget, there was a monies to increase staffing for extended day educational programming, but that's always been a self-funded program, so what is different?
So this year, we piloted some full-time positions where the TA has split half-time at EDEP and half-time at a school for various purposes. And that half-time portion is funded within the EDEP program. So that is self-sustaining still. The other half, where the TA spends at the school, is being funded by this learning recovery fund in the current year. That's one-time funding. So what we want to do is transfer that school portion of the TA to our school fund. So the EDEP portion would still stay in the EDEP-funded program. So they would still continue to be self-sustaining. It would just be a shift in the funding source for that half of the, their teaching half of the TA day. Does that make sense? Okay.
So that's the breakout that's in the budget book for that?
Yes, it's the portion that the school fund has to bear.
Just because it's listed here, what services do we provide for homeless students? Is that federally mandated service, or what are we doing with that money?
I don't know that offhand. We can follow up with you on that?
Okay.
Okay.
I noticed some of the things in this section mention things like this, but there's no data on like how many, and that would just be a nice information point to like, how many homeless students do we serve and that sort of thing? So places where we can put more information, that'd be great, if it's not too much trouble.
Okay.
Like, how many meals did we serve? I mean, can you imagine? I just want, I was looking at the school nutrition budget.
A lot. A lot.
Which of the categories would include the EDEP person when they are not in the EDEP program? Which one of these categories?
Oh, right now, it's, they're being funded from this learning recovery fund, but the idea, the proposal is for the school to operationalize that and make that part of a school's allocation.
I mean, it's in a different place in the notebook, but it's A12 that has the numbers for homeless children and how many meals, things like that. But it does, it would make sense to have them closer to where those items are too.
We are flipping back to Section A anyway to review. So what are those changes that are happening from budget to budget? Because when you look at the Sections C, D, E, and F, you don't really know, well, what, how can I digest this? So that's what Section A does. It provides an overview of what's changing from year to year, so I'll touch on that a little bit. Our total expenditure changes, as you've seen a couple times now, equal about $10.9 million. These changes include baseline adjustments, technical and non-discretionary costs, compensation, enrollment and demographics, transitioning from one-time funding, and new proposals. Most of these will be covered in detail at future work sessions, so tonight I will just review some of the more technical items. The baseline budget for FY '24, which is the first version of the budget that we developed, assumes that the budgeted number of FTEs and services remain flat from FY '23. And that's updated for actual compensation and benefits costs for the current employees that we have. These updates resulted in savings of $2.2 million due to position changes, employee turnover, and employee benefit plan changes. We also make an adjustment to eliminate one-time costs that we budgeted in FY '23, which was about $10.8 million. As we see increases in compensation, we also see increases in lapse savings from year to year. Those are savings that we have when positions are vacant during the year. Next, we budget in any approved mid-year changes, most notably, the compensation study recommendations for the current year. Once we make all of these adjustments, our starting point for building up the FY '24 draft funding request is about $10 million less than the adopted FY '23 amount. Other non-discretionary changes include an increase in healthcare expenses, transfer to the Children's Services Act, contribution to K-Tech, building services, operating impacts, licensing costs, and inflationary increases. These amount to the $4 million in the technical and non-discretionary changes category. We will hear more about healthcare and CSA at next week's work session. Are there any questions about non-discretionary and technical changes?
I have one quick question. Just best practice for the lapse, every year, do we count on a certain percentage on that, or do we just see what we get every year? Or is it like best practice to say, oh, we're going to recoup this percentage?
What we do is we look at about five years of historically what has been the savings by salary and benefit type, and then we project out what next year might look like based on historical trends.
Okay, thank you.
If you actually look on, in Section E, on page E30, the assumptions are laid out there. And they do shift a little bit. Yep, E30, lapse factor. So for FY '24, we estimated savings of 1.5% of baseline salaries. Oh, that actually needs to be corrected. It's the bullet points that I believe are correct. 1.3% of baseline salaries. And then we also did an analysis and saw that we had 3.6% in the retirement budget. So those are the two variables we use when projecting lapse for FY '24.
Thank you. And I am impressed by your ability to point to the exact.
That's the budget book. So here's our timeline. And just a quick recap on, we do have further proposals I know you may have questions about and want to discuss further at work session number two and number three. And then here's sort of a longer timeline to prepare you to approve the funding requests on March 9. So if there are questions and requests for information, this would be a great time to come up there.
Sort of a comment question. I know that Dr. Ha's included capital needs over the next five years. You have in the operating budget inflation, you know, increase due to inflation. Are we going to build that into, or at least have a caveat on the slide talking about capital, about increasing costs?
Yes. We've been working in partnership with county staff to apply inflationary assumptions for each of the next five years so that we're sort of on the same page, so that projects, the current projects in the CIP are, their costs are updated.
Is that going to be updated in the funding request package?
In the recommended budget?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Just a comment. It's a very good budget book. Just need to get my magnifying glass to read some of the slides.
And we can work on some of the formatting.
I'll just put two pairs of glasses on. It usually works at home.
No, just a huge compliment to you and your staff. I mean, it's unbelievable the amount of work that goes into this, the amount of calculations, but also more impressively, I think, is all the context. I mean, it is so helpful to see all the context around each of the schools, each of the departments to, so that we fully understand the complexity of the children and the teachers and the staff and the administration, and what they face every day. So I so appreciate it.
I do have a question. You probably know this, but maybe it's speculation. What would be the financial impact if General Assembly approves a 7% rather than a 5% salary increase?
Yep. And since the calculation tools were released tonight, we'll be able to follow up with some more numbers to that state budget slide.
Thank you. I have a follow-up question. What is the accessibility of this funding request for people who might be listening or might be curious or, you know, want to know what we're looking at?
Great question. So on this slide, there's kind of an easy URL to get to the FY '24 budget development site. And that site includes both presentations from tonight, the detailed budget book, and sort of results from the budget survey, and other inputs that have gone into the process that started in the fall. So it's just kind of all in one place right there.
Awesome. So I, your voice noticeably raised, and you got a lot happier when you said, "And that's it." So I think you're happy to be done. Thank you so much, and I think that concludes it. Did you want to say something, Dr. Ha?
No, I just want to say thank you, Maya.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we will see you next week?
And every week thereafter. The end of time.
Are there any comments from the school board members? Anything?
No, we have a lot to learn.
Okay. I call this meeting adjourned.
I'm reading.